John Bajer.
Present.
Susie Litt.
Present.
Ben Manning.
Present.
Josh Carr.
Present.
Anne Miller.
Present.
Phil David Senior.
Present.
Phil David the Second.
Present.
Mayor Ray Allen Moore.
Thank you. At this time, if you would stand, we'll have our invocation. And be all of our faithful members. Dear Lord, Father, we thank you for the freedom to be able to come together and to conduct business openly. We thank the blessing that you bestowed upon our city. We thank you for the guests that we have here tonight to observe our council meeting. And we pray that you be with us as we make decisions to move our city forward. And we continue. In the name of your great amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. At this time, I want to ask Mr. Merritt to play a short clip that was on tonight's 13 News. I drank popcorn. Lynn was drinking popcorn, he didn't. I had the Coke on that. But I think this is something very positive for our city, and I'd just share it with them.
Well, the Super Bowl is over soon. Now, all eyes are on Indianapolis as we inch closer to NBA All-Star Weekend. When it comes to the history of basketball in Indiana, much of the story starts about an hour down the road in Martinsville. Our Samantha Johnson has more. He's one of the greatest basketball coaches of all time, the Indiana rubber man, John Wooden. And walking into the Martinsville Middle School that now wears his name like the back of a jersey is like stepping back in time.
This gym is only just opened, but 1924, this is the gym that John Wooden played in.
And now, 150 feet of history take players and fans alike through the story of this place. The gym's inaugural game was 100 years ago this month, and just three years later, Martinsville's starting five with ballers like Lester Reynolds, Aaron Sutton, and John Wooden would bring home a state title.
That team was worth it. They won the state championship for a reason.
They were talented.
They were talented.
Wooden's legacy off the court is just as meaningful here. His storied scriptures, so to speak, are all around.
Well, I don't think you can go anywhere in this building and not see something with John Wooden.
In fact, the artisans here today use Wooden's Pyramid of Success to become their own All-Stars.
We talk about it in the Times and Daily, talk about it in class for me. Martinville, of course, always be home.
Coach Wooden passed away in 2010, just after 100. Superintendent Eric Boland visited Wooden in his house a few years prior to welcome him into the inaugural class of the Martinsville Hall of Fame. You said that today, you remember that?
No, it's been a good day. I was simply listening and learning and trying to take it all in, then it don't get any better than that.
What happens in this gym all those years ago also led to one of the greatest sports stories of all time. This gym helping build the spirit of small-town high school basketball for the movie Hoosiers.
We take a lot of that right now. And that's Indiana basketball.
I don't do any of that. Again, very constant thing for the story from Martinsville. And Samantha Johnson is the graduate of Martinsville High School, and she's been very kind to come back and do clips for things. She was here for Groundbreak for the PlayStation many weeks ago. So, but I also want to take this point to introduce special members tonight. We have some students from the Youth Government Club at John Wooden Middle School. Youth in Government is a national program organized by the YMCA with the goal of promoting engagement and leadership skills in the students. Members here this evening, Cyrus Bailey, who is the past president, voted by his fellow members. We have Kendall Anderson, Mackenzie Belcher, Jaylen Dooley, Devon Latham, Cameron Boral, and Michaela Crater. They're led, and this is part, like I said, with YMCA. The students have learned about state legislation and even wrote their own bills, but they would like to someday be seen in the laws of the state of Indiana. They did have an opportunity to practice in the market government program with other Youth in Government students from around Indiana at a conference in November. Their bills went through a committee and were voted on before the House and Senate, made up of their peers. And Michaela's bill was placed as one of the top two bills presented that day, earning her the standing bill of honor. So, they're here tonight, they were here at our Board of Works meeting, they're here this evening to observe city government, and we appreciate them coming out this evening. And if they would, I believe Steven would like to get a picture, so if the students will come down in front here, and we have a small token for you also. Just waiting to line up in front of there. Thank you so much for getting a picture. And just a small token for our education community and your effort in coming here this evening to involve. Now, the one thing, I had the opportunity to speak to a third grade class at South School last week, and they had done their own class lectures and everything. And I'll tell you the same thing I told them, when you turn 18 and you have the right to go, go exercise that vote. There are a lot of people that live and die in a way that get that right to vote. And don't take a fight, because there's a lot of times you don't have that opportunity. So, please make sure you exercise that right. Let me get that one. Everyone sent copies of the minutes from the Monday General Assembly meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
The movement of minutes will be accepted and distributed.
Second.
Then, a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented, all in very standard.
Aye.
All the votes made, motion passes. Mr. Merritt, would you like to introduce our other distinguished guests this evening?
Yes.
And nothing to interrupt, but the students, you know, you're here tonight, and we've got another special guest.
We have an All-Star lineup tonight, so it's my pleasure to introduce a familiar face to you, but one that may not be as familiar to you. So, it's no secret that we as a city have tried to expand our relationship with the trust Indiana, the Indiana Board for Depositories. Tonight, presenting for this tonight, State Treasurer Elliot and Michael Neal, Executive Director. And they'll be talking about that relationship and all the benefits that we are able to have due to that. So, gentlemen, I'll turn number two.
Well, this is kind of usually when I'm going to meet with the local body of the local government, I have to explain a little, a little history. And I don't have to do that anymore, but I related this. As, as a dear friend, and all of your dear friends, one of the things I love being able to do is talk about our government. And so, I often times, pretty much every time, need to talk about being with Martinsville, where I raised my family, where I started business, where homes. So, I'm really glad today to be able to be here with friends and share a little bit. For those of you who don't know, probably don't know who I am, I am the Indiana State Treasurer. I also am a Martinsvilleer, so I live here. So, with that, today, we're going to talk about something very specific. One of the things that I'm very, why I was very excited to run for State Treasurer is because a lot of communities in State Treasurer interact with the local government. One of the things that I have right now is just a tremendous tool that a lot of, a lot of communities are able to frankly raise a lot of money and use a lot of money for projects that wouldn't be able to because of taking advantage of dangerous risks that we have right now. The other things is a little must know is the Board for Depositories. And I'm going to let Mike Neal get up very minute and explain some of the details of what the Board for Depositories does, but let me just give you a brief overview. The Board for Depositories runs the Public Deposit Insurance Fund. This is insurance fund that protects all Indiana local governments. Oftentimes, what happens when you see bank failures that happen in history, that has been, that has really hurt especially rural communities. The Board for Depositories runs the PDIF, and that PDIF literally ensures 100% of all public funds. So, that means here in Indiana, if there were a bank failure, 100% of the funds of the city Martinsville were recovered. Now, we've had this since the 30s. But the reality is, to my knowledge, and I've talked to just about every state treasurer, no other state has anything like this. It's something very intimidating. So, to give some of the details about the Board for Depositories, I'd like to introduce the Executive Director for the Indiana Board for Depositories, Mike Neal.
Thank you, Treasurer. Good evening, Mayor, Club Treasurer, members of the common council. As Treasurer said, I'm Mike Neal, I serve as a Special Assistant to the Treasurer and the Executive Director of the Indiana Board for Depositories, and I'm very thankful to be with you here tonight. My goal tonight is to give you about 10 minutes of kind of what the Board for Depositories is and what it means to the city of Martinsville, as well as other municipalities and local units of government across the state. We'll leave a couple minutes for questions as well, what does it interact with you, stop me at that point during the conversation, it is coming. And I'd be happy to answer questions that you have. So, a quick summary, we're going to talk about the Board for Depositories is and what its function is, what the Public Deposit Insurance Fund is and its current status. We'll talk about approved depositories and how we monitor the health of the banks that you put tax dollars into. And we'll talk about collateralization requirements, what this fund needs to local units of government, process for determining a failure, and how a payout will occur, provided there was. And I'm not going to let it kind of say that about a bank failure. And then the future of what the BFD and the PDIF work direction is we're headed. So, the Board for Depositories is the statutory agency that is responsible for the board of the Public Deposit Insurance Fund. It's an independent body politic and corporate, which means it's an instrument of the state, but it is not a state government agency in a sense. It's not like INDOP, it's not like FSSA or anybody else. So, we have our own board that is separate from the legislature, and other than the laws that are placed before us, we manage our own money, our own funds, our own everything, our bylaws within the statute. And so, we do not go to the General Assembly for anything other than specific statutes that we would need or not need to be moved. If you're looking for some light reading tonight, looking to go to bed, Indiana Code 51312, especially for our students in the back, that's a great opportunity to read more about the statute itself. The board has nine quarters, and we maintain a small to average to manage the PDIF. So, essentially, we are a complete self-sufficiency, we do not drain one dollar of taxpayer money. We take the money that's been here since the 1930s, and we invest that money so that we can gain interest at one bolster of the fund, pay our assistance. And then I serve as the Board Director to the Treasurer of State, who I've had the pleasure of knowing for 12-plus years, and I got a call last year to, I had some State House experience, could have come and served again, and I'm somehow coming back in the State House. What is the function of the BFD? Essentially, the Board for Depositories is responsible for periodically determining the adequacy of the PDIF, which means essentially, is there enough money in this fund? And if there isn't, using the statutory laws that we have to add to that fund, should we be doing so? Well, now, the board is statutory, we're working twice a year, maybe four times a year, once a quarter, and those meetings, most of that is going to executive sessions, look at private banking data information that's not public, to ensure that the banks are operating properly, they're healthy, so that we don't have a bank failure, and if there's one on its way, how can that for occurs? And then we keep a small staff that's separate from the state. The board, as you see here, the board is made up of the governor, is the chair, who's definitely is Chris Johnston, who heads all the management budget. State Controller, Lisa Shalas, our Vice Chair, Secretary, sorry, Esther Daniel Elliott, my boss, is the Secretary of Management, and that position is what actually runs the operations. So, the board approves the items that they came with in statute, and the Secretary of Management is the operator, he seats most of that operations, me, and I report to him. And then you'll see here Vice State Examenter, Paul Joyce, financial institution, he's new, he's definitely, he runs the Department of Financial, which is the state's bank regular on the state side. And then we have four bank presidents that all serve by statute, two, what about the governor, one by the President, who's in the Senate, your favorite son, and Speaker of the House Representatives, and those four bankers, Mary Lee's Arnold. Again, she's new, she was just recently appointed by the President of the Senate, Brad Rust, Matt Russell, and Derek Silver. And they have to be of a certain size of bank, so they have to have X to Y assets, so you have a medium, large bank, and one credit. Four bankers that make up that board. So, what is the PDIF? It was created in 1937, in World War II, the Great Depression. Of course, bank failures all across Indiana did not, it affected Indiana, everybody else. It essentially was instrumental to protect municipal and government tax dollars from bank failure. Of what FDIC provides, so, and we'll get into kind of how that calculation works in a second. One of the pieces that we have under state law is the ability to assess each year up to 2% of government deposits being assessed to the bank and usually to bolster the fund. So, from 1937 to 1985, whatever that percent was, up to 2%, that money was taken. And essentially, what it was is whatever your rate of return was, they made that just a little bit smaller, they gave that to us, that's how they did that. In 1985, actuarial thing was done, and it was determined that the PDIF had enough money, and it could live off its interest dollars, and so, we stopped up. And so, since 1985, we've not made any assessments on banks. However, twice a year, we have to vote on whether we're going to do that or not, and at what rate. So, looking at that, and I'll talk a little bit about, I have some paper slides in front of you, the next slide here is actually a slide I didn't delete. So, skip that one, it's one that's a table, so that one you can get rid of because that's old. This is the information of the fund, and how this money is invested is we look at essentially what, as short-term as possible, makes us a lot of money. So, bonds and securities, you know, treasury notes, that's typically what we're in, so that those are getting, you know, a good percentage, we can get that money back immediately if we have a bank failure, we have to pay that out. If you look, this is the latest PDIF balance, as of 131, it's just over $327 million. The interest estimated for this year, this fiscal year for Indy is about $12.4 million. And I put the numbers of the balance here to show you. I was doing for this fund, just like I was doing for all of you and your investments here in the city. Started this year with just $320.5 million, and the interest in fiscal year 2023 is about $3.345 million. So, you can look the difference between, you know, 3 and 1/3 and 12 and 1/2, and what the difference is when it comes to interest of that money minus the fee we take to operate. So, more than 12 million of those dollars went right back into the fund. That's how we try to bolster that. We look at, and we're going to talk a little about a study in a second. We have not done any assessments, we hope to not do any assessments on anybody. For several years, a lot of interest money was taken by the state from various amount of funds, and was placed back into pension funds in local units of government to bolster this up. And so, this fund stayed stagnant for about seven years, and so, we're trying to play catch-up, and this interest rate environment is helping us there. What is approved depository? I'm sure, especially with my treasurer, we all know what an approved depository is. The state currently has 132, sorry, 142 approved depositories that are public funds. All depositories that are allowed, so those funds are approved by the state where finance and treasurer is one of three members of that board. So, I get information from a bank that wants to be added, I send that to the comptroller's office, they put it on the agenda, the comptroller, the treasurer, and the head of state budget agency are voters on that. And that's how you become an approved depository, based on some health and other information for the bank. All government funds covered by the PDIF must be audited by the state board accounts, so if you're not doing that, check that when you are, or if you are out of compliance, that's how you lose coverage, I'm sure. And no, the city of Martinsville is not in that place, but there are some municipalities, sometimes there are, where we don't use approved depositories at all. As long as you follow state board financing, you're within approved depository, you are covered up to 100% of every government dollar that you have in case of bank failure. And that's, and one of the things we always say is try not to let a city doesn't have that trouble. Some, we cover county hospitals, is one of the entities we cover, and sometimes they have foundation, foundation dollars are not government dollars, therefore, we're not covered. And so, sometimes making sure those funds are not coming, helps us in case of a failure, to ensure we get dollars as quickly as possible to a unit of government. We'll talk about how that happened in a second. Monitoring bank health, so this is the biggest part of my job, especially over the last year. I was about, what, one month in my job, and Silicon Valley failed, causing a shingle across the nation, and it's from coast to coast, quite literally. And I'm the new guy on the block trying to figure out what's happening from Indiana. We use several respective rating agencies, and we have a matrix that tells us, one, whether or not a bank is worthy of being a depository. Two, whether or not we have additional collateralization requirements for them to continue to operate, that protects the fund and protects you. And I'll talk about collateralization, I'll talk about that in a second, and I'll show you what that means. We use FedFIS and Standard and Coors Bank Insurabilities, and they provide us each quarter, taking a previous order of bank health through a different mix of, I call it the secret sauce, of earnings and debt and bad debt and all different things, capital ratios and items that make up the health of a bank and whether or not they're liquid and solid. We look at those each quarter, I take those to the board, we talk about those in private, and then the issues that can be made, of course, are done in public. Take much action on public end, but of course, when somebody gets online, we certainly do on the back end. Collateralization, why would someone need collateral? So, in 2010, after the Great Recession, so we got the depression and the recession, no exchange of rules, and after 2018, collateralization was added because of the behavior case during that crisis. This was done to add extra protection to deposit, and allows a troubled bank that may just need a little help to get up speed to continue to protect you and protect the fund, so we ensure that it's in place, and have as much of that money as state stable as possible. We use those ratings to do that. There is a 0, 50, and 100%. And I know you, well, it's not working then. Is it going weird? Ah, we'll use that for now. It's gonna be hard to see if it's in your packet, but it shows you the ratings, so you either have 0%, 50%, or 100% collateralization. Almost all banks of 102 are leaving number currently, is 136 of them do not collateralize. So, most of our readers in the state of Indiana. The other banks, minus one, have to collateralize either at 50 or 100%. Some of the banks that are 100% don't have any deposits on hand because the government hasn't trusted them to put the money there, so most of the time, it doesn't matter. The ones that are 50%, that something's happened, a lot of them, they might assume that their earnings would drop, which means their rates for a couple of quarters, and we have to kind of force collateralization. One bank, I can't tell you who collateralizes 100% on its own voluntarily, and the reason they do that is under the statute and bylaws, if you voluntarily collateralize, if there was an assessment, you wouldn't have to pay it. And so, one bank chooses to do that in Indiana currently. But this means on the scoring, it tells you what a collateralization triggering event is, and how they come after that role. I assess that every quarter, I provide that to the, to the board, that's more of an administrative function of making it or not, but if they wanted to add additional collateralizations, the board could. This also, just to kind of give you an idea, this is older information, but this essentially shows you any time to the left here, $24.5 billion at the low end, the quarter after, $22.7 million. This fund is covering about that much money deposited, and that goes from the state all the way to every single local unit of government, schools, townships, et cetera. So, that's the amount of money that we're covering at any time. Of course, the pension closes, deposits are made, or money is withdrawn, or projects are paid for, and that is kind of an idea of what that looks like. And this is a public report, this is a report that you can see in public once a quarter. So, what the fund does is keep. So, if an approved depository was to, excuse me, I'm having trouble reading that there, I got here in front of you, but didn't continue to advance my slides. Given approved depository, the health of the funds described by the statute were to fail, PDIF would essentially pay out to the unit of government and build through what that, in a second, there's a process. And that is, the reason we do that, so first of all, Treasurer is correct, there are zero states other than ours that has this program. Closest is state Wisconsin, their statute allows the government to pay them up to $400,000 in failure. Whether you have $400,000, $400 million, you get $400,000 for bank fails. Now, what most states do is they require collateralization at 100%. The good thing about that is each municipality is affected, not be used to make money, and so, it takes liquidity out of the market, and liquidity comes out of the market, so if you have a bank failure, such as Silicon Valley and others. So, we'll talk through what that looks like. So, what happens if a bank fails? What happens if a bank fails? He's knocked out some wood. So, this process here is what happens if a bank fails, and how you essentially get your money. There's a six-step process, it gives us up to 90 days to do so. The goal is to do it in 10 days or less if we can. A lot of times, it's to ensure that either, one, the fund amounts agree, and I'll talk through that in a second, or two, if there's probably a chance to investigate potentially some. All these failures, we have to let law enforcement do its job. Step one, the Department of Finance institutions will determine the amount of public funds that are gassing coverage and report that to the Attorney General, State Controller, public officers, which would be the Court Treasurer, and the Mayor, and the Board for Depositories. So, to show you what that means, the Board for Depositories does not decide if you get your money or not. We regulate, we provide the information, we collect information from banks, get information, they're public funded quarterly, then we get the ratings quarterly. But it is the Attorney General and the State Controller who decide, and the Department of Finance institutions, how much money you get, based on the bank records, both yours and the bank's, to ensure that they match up. So, that process happens, it can take up to 20 days. Next, the public officer, so again, the Court Treasurer will deliver their verified information to the Attorney General and State Controller. So, we got the money, the information from the bank, now we're going to get your information, see that they match. So, if you had $8,000, if you had $8,000, we can pay that out. The next item is the Attorney General and the State Controller will determine the PDIF coverage and send the decision to the interested parties. If no determination is made, then you can petition in court to make somebody pay, or if you didn't answer the derogatories, you don't have to pay out. The next item is that that information has to be published in a newspaper, it has to be public. If you agree, if, if you say, I had $8,000, and I says I had $800,000, you disagree, excuse me, you have the opportunity to appeal. You can appeal to court, and you can appeal to board, and then you can determine. But if that doesn't happen, then my team gets right check. And yeah, whoever the receiver is, so if your bank fails, we, someone gets, says you're going to have a bank, and we're going to write you a check so you can continue to pay. Police officers, you can continue to ensure that, you know, public works is doing its thing, and that everybody is paying, and that you continue to serve the citizens of the city. Last item I have for you is what does the BFD look like forward? So, Kenny makes part of investments to bolster the fund. In every attempt to avoid assessments as possible, the Treasurer's office continues to legislatively defend. I'm sure some of you have heard that there's a Medicaid recall, state of Indiana, $1 million. The state is looking under every car corner, every agency to see what dollars are around that they can scratch up so that they can pay that down. And the funds that have money that just sit like this and grow, they get very attractive, especially when this would be about 1/3 of it. And so, the good thing is, is that there's legislation right now that exempts the BFD from that. We're continuing, obviously, a lobbying team to ensure that that state, as they look for that money. And the last item is, we are looking, I'm sorry, forgive me, we're also looking at, there's a system, and I didn't have a chance to show you, this is a short presentation that I made, of how a bank reports how much money they have on the yours. They report that to us in the system, so that I can see how much money we're having to cover by each entity, and if I had to contact somebody, I could. The last thing is, we've studied, we're currently working at Allstate University to look at risks of the fund, whether or not there should be additional collateralization, and whether or not the fund amount based on the current climate is enough. And if so, great, if it's not, what do we need to do to do that? So, based on that, that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to open up for questions from anyone. This is my contact information, at any time, if I can get off on a, Ben and I have spoken quite a bit, the mayor definitely knows what we're finding, and so, always happy to be, come back here, do anything, have any meetings, do what I can. when I can, answer questions over phone or email, but happy to answer the questions of, of, of the common council, Stephen.
Well, I have a question, how come, um, the state can't use this to fund the medic?
So, under statute, the warfare depositories money has a very specific purpose, and it's a dedicated fund. So, this money means year after year, it is not referred to the general fund, and statute protects it from being used for any other purpose. Whereas there are other funds, uh, for instance, we have the ESA program, uh, which is an educational scholarship, uh, account for, uh, disabled children to get a special destination maybe, and we have a ten million dollars a year. If that money is being spent, rest of that money is back to the general fund, it's appropriate that ten million, we spend five, and five goes back. We don't have such a provision.
How many Indian municipalities participate in this one?
That is a great question, um, all of them, because it's required by law. So because you are covered, um, by using an approved depository and, uh, you are following the state board of accounts rules, regulations, um, you are covered by default regardless if you want it or not, but you definitely want it. Because no, others have to, to be, to be honest, a state that makes people collateral, other, other, um, collateralize at a hundred percent, which means they have to collateralize at about a hundred and five percent to make sure they cover events and flows of the fund. Also, uh, there are private organizations that you pay money to get this type of insurance. You're getting it at a cost, um, which also is why you're able to make better rates than most states competitively with your banks or with trust in Indiana, is because they're taking that off of your percentage of how much money you make your interest, and they're paying for that collateralization, because there are fees, no, they're assessed for by private insurance. So, the free item that we offer, uh, based off of, um, the, the tumult of the banking industry.
Do you do your assessment, or do you hold a line on those outside rating agencies to determine the bank health?
So, there are two, there are two parts to that, I think, great question, there's a set of bylaws, um, that give us the collateralization matrix, uh, based on those numbers, but there's also a statutory requirement, that if a bank, so for instance, about a third of Indiana, a third of the banks that are, of approved depositories aren't state banks, which means there are two terms, either federal, regional, chartered outside of Indiana, credit unions, et cetera. So we don't get to regulate, but somebody does, and if they're regulatory agencies such as, you know, Ohio's for, the Fed Office of the Comptroller of Currency, if they chose, uh, to write a consent order for some reason why, hey, your bank's not doing good, you have to remedy these things, we can use that regulatory document to enforce collateralization on an outside of our matrix. So their ratings may look good, because maybe their earnings were good, but maybe there was some other reason why they're not healthy. And we get all that document, and we can either make one of two things, enforce one hundred percent collateralization immediately, or within thirty days, or make them stop making public deposits altogether.
Did they identify this whole, um, lobby?
That is a great question.
That's twenty twenty?
It did not. And there's, and there's a reason why it didn't. Because if you, if you look at, now that there was, that was on the investment side first, and it did not have to do with deposits on that. Now, most of their deposits were uninsured, which is why it failed. How it failed, which is why the FDIC did a hundred percent, and by the way, if the FDIC did a hundred percent, we'd have paid out. So if they get to do that, cool for us. But, um, that's, but it started on the investment side, and then with the investment side going down, people got panicked and started pulling their deposits out, and that's how it failed. So otherwise, so this does not look at their investment side of their organization, it's simply on the deposits. So no, we would not done it. Now, what are we doing in this study? Are there other types of data points that we should be looking at to determine bank health? I don't think the answer to that is, but I'm guessing that if we couldn't get it on the numbers we have.
Thank you.
Court Treasurer, Mayor, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Andrew Michael, thank you for taking, talking about coming here this evening to hear a school of education.
Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Thanks.
Chief Green, you up there for Paul?
I did. Remember the clicker this morning? Matthew, thanks. I'm a little short enough to be able to see. One of the things I thought was really cool, the thirteen, I, I've never seen that commercial, um, really did my heart to great to see that he was an Artesian and throwing a bull maker top, and that was a really great thing too, to know he was a bull maker, so. Oh, crap, sorry. Uh, anyway. Just want to bring to you this past year's annual report, we would have done it in January, we had a little snap move there, and it was kind of busy. Um, obviously, we put together multiple pages there, some of which I'm not gonna go over, but we knew that with the transparency, we wanted to make sure that we introduced the fire departments, and we went on the website, all the information was there, so people knew what our mission statement was, kind of who I am, and, and other different people in our organization, from the, uh, safety training division and all those things, our organizational chart, in front of you. We have a lot of different things going on here, uh, fire department, and I know there's just a lot of reading, I, I encourage you to look at those things. I'll go over some of the numbers and, uh, just talk briefly about a few things that happened this past year. Uh, overall, we were twenty-one runs higher in twenty-three and more in twenty-two. Previous several years before that, we would increase at least by a hundred. So, we kind of tapered off a little bit, and it was kind of nice. Um, we went up in fires, as you can see, but only by a couple, our medical runs were pretty much the same. Uh, we ended up, uh, coming down on you, you can see those numbers in front of you right there with the, I've seen that before, the pie graph that normally I have to give them normally. Um, so, anyway, those things right there, um, kind of, kind of snapshot all the things that, that kind of, uh, we do on a daily basis. Think some of the information here as well. A lot of people say, um, how busy are your different shifts, you know, how many range taken, different things like that. Our busiest shift was A shift, and Captain Collier is, uh, he loves to let everybody know that he had a lot more runs than everybody else on his shift, um, but they happened to be the one that received promotion runs for the year at eleven hundred, and I think that's ninety-two. Um, hold on, I have to get to my glasses here for a second. No, don't make fun of me, these are the best glasses ever, so. Uh, anyway, so then you go to the busiest month, and November's our busiest month, and if you haven't looked at this, uh, before tonight, I really thought that we would find out busiest day would have been Friday or Saturday, but it's not, it's a Monday for us, and of course, the busiest time of the day that we're, um, moving around a lot through the city, and most people know this, is lunchtime, one o'clock to two o'clock. We typically are very, it never fails when guys go to put their order in to have lunch or something, start making lunch on the stove upstairs, the tons of the wall, but it goes off. Uh, majority of the time, that is, uh, the highest time, uh, that, and number two time frame, so. Some of the pictures that you see here, in, in the past, we used to have fun with, you know, who can have the nicest pie graph, and this, that, and the other. Um, I, I haven't got Chief Lang on that yet, but we're towards it. Um, there was a lot of activity this past year, and the major things that we dealt with here in the city was the tornado, and with the tornado, we also, um, come out of that tornado, obviously, with no injuries that were major of any kind, but a lot of damage. And we were able to test a lot of our system, how we, uh, would handle things, we did really well. The thing that it tests you on is lack of resources and manpower, when everybody, uh, needs help. I thought as a whole, the city, and what I would tell you is the mayor and Mac, everybody sitting around here, they had the, the blue jeans on and they were, and I will tell you, a firefighter and the chief of the department, that was refreshing, because I had somebody there I could look to and talk to and pat things off of them if I needed to, and say this is what we gotta do, and we always had really great help there, and I really appreciate that, as well as the firefighters in the, at the fire station. We had multiple fires this year, we had some pretty tough ones. Um, this year, in twenty twenty-four, hasn't started out quick for us as far as fires and fatalities, but those things are gonna happen. Um, Ben, you can look through some of those pictures and see some of the, uh, on scene action and things like that. This past year, you were kind enough to let us go ahead and get our training division going. Training, our training, um, officer, Steve Harpsock, he's here this evening, he also does, uh, safety on the scene. Steve spent, how many years you spent in the fire service, Steve?
I'll just say over four.
Probably closer to my almost fifty, right? Wait, Steve, here's the thing about Steve, a lot of people know Steve, he, a lot of people know Steve, and he's seen it a lot, he's done a lot, he's been, you know, electrocuted multiple times with ADDs and doing different things. When I started in fire service, uh, a time ago, I was driving to Carmel, Indiana, doing my initial job right out of college. Steve took me under his wing and said, come on with the fire station in Pittsburgh? Was that where we were at? Yeah. And it was at the old, um, wastewater treatment facility. And I got a lot about craziness, and I don't mean by him, just in, in the world of fire and things that they would go and see, and, uh, I've known Steve a long time, and I could be happier having him as our training officer, and most importantly, is the safety officer on it. The hardest thing that we battle with is you get a lot of people on the scene, whether it be pedestrian, whether it be just civilians, whether it be whoever's coming on the scenes, and he always has my back. As a command officer and the one in charge, he's always there to make sure, he's seen it, probably done it, it's super important, and I'm grateful to have him. We have, uh, had our first recruit classes past year, and Steve, uh, was in charge of putting that recruit, recruit class on, we learned a lot of things in that recruit class. This coming year, we're getting ready to start, uh, another recruit class coming up real soon, we have four people in that. Uh, we have a lot to do, and we have sat down and learned from our past mistakes and things that we need to do to make these, uh, young men that are coming home successful, most importantly, if they want to stay. And I think we've done a lot of research on what we need to do to change that culture and what we, what we have here in Martinsville. We saw a little bit earlier, Channel thirteen, that's pretty awesome. But Martinsville has a lot of, they have a lot of these young firemen that are gonna be coming in, and we're gonna take full advantage of that, so. Um, another person that I kind of didn't talk about, but Aaron Frager being operations, uh, Aaron is my right-hand man, Aaron is what I refer to calling him as the red box guy. Uh, we did a personality assessment, I've known him a long time, and when we did the personality assessment, I learned that Aaron sits way up here in the top right corner of red box, meaning you give him a task, he's focused until it's done. And I, I'm a better person, so when I see that stare in Aaron's eyes, I just ask him, are you red box and green right now? I would walk away, because I know that he's gonna be doing a task. Aaron's a, a huge, um, attribute to the fire department. Then we get into the investigations, um, and inspections division with Charlie Frager, and he's been over the years, has studied and studied and studied more books, and probably owned most of the fire books when it comes to investigation and error codes. He's a guy that if you, you go to Charlie, I promise you, he's gonna know the, he's one of those guys that you want in your back pocket when you're trying to figure out something. Uh, we just did a, a death investigation on a, on a fire, and Charlie kept saying, I think we need to be correct in this area. And, uh, he was dead right, and the dogs weren't too, but we just couldn't quite find where we needed to dig five feet down to get to this person, but Charlie, he, he knew right where we need to go, he does a great job. As you can see with, um, with Charlie back behind inspection investigations, you have some different pictures with him there, um, that he does, from, he does everything on the inspection side, he's going around all the businesses, he's going to make sure that the, the citizens of Martinsville are protected, but also to make sure that we're protected when we're going into these facilities, so you can see some of those different, uh, pictures. As you can see on page, it says inspections, investigations, miscellaneous, and a bunch of numbers, take a look at that. Uh, in the past, it used to be Chad that would have to allow him to do a lot of that back when Chief Frager was here and be the chief. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know how that man ever got anything done, uh, because not only did he do inspection, investigation, miscellaneous, but it's really hard to do them as thorough as what's happening. Martinsville's growing, we're growing quite a bit, so, um, as you see in some of these numbers, there's site visits, um, and, and annual, uh, inspections, four hundred and thirty inspections, so there's, we're gonna be done with each of those, there's quite a bit of, Charlie does a remarkable job in that as well. On the following page, you can just see some different pictures, um, that have taken place over the course of time here. Uh, a lot of people don't realize that we do water rescue, we do rope rescue, um, there's a lot of different things that go on, a wildfire, that we go out and do it, and you think we're going out to the forestry, but oftentimes that's not really the case, uh, anymore, we're going out to the private residential, Steve and I were just talking a little ago about the state in Martinsville this week, past week, and people were hurt, and there was wildfires everywhere. And it's not the big fires that we see on TV, but these are fires that go up and down hills and hollers, and, and I'll tell you what, these guys work their butts off to put them out and make sure that structures are safe, and then it just doesn't get carried away. On the final page, you can see some pictures here that I find to be, uh, really important, and don't take long time, but this is really important for our city and the fire department itself, and we participate in nine eleven ceremony, every year we do a nine eleven ceremony, and every year I would love to have everybody there. We do it right at the time, uh, just about five minutes before the first plane hit the towers, and we put on a ceremony there. If no one is still doing it, and there's a thousand people there who are still doing it, we're gonna continue to honor those who have fallen before us. We do those type of parades we love, uh, obviously, the Christmas parade, Brian Collier absolutely loves, if you've seen everybody, the, um, this past year, we also, um, started actually this, this January, started with the fire chaplain. So Mike Ellis, he's now the fire department chaplain, and we're really grateful to have him on. Mike, that means he's a lot, and he does a lot of tough things, and recently, he's had multiple deaths on the same day, up to three or four. A lot of stuff going on there, uh, and a lot of toy drives and a lot of just different things that we get to kids and do things, various things around town, so. Anyway, that is kind of, uh, long and short of this, I hope that I gave you a, a good history of this past year. I'm gonna thank the council, number one, um, we have a beautiful fire truck sitting in our fire station, it has arrived on February the twenty-second at four P M. We have a ceremony there, we do the training all day, and the ceremony is a wash down, push the truck into the bay, uh, tradition, and that'll be something that we are doing and looking forward to doing. Um, we're excited about that, and then the other thing is, I, I wanna thank you for having faith in us to, to do the right thing to the citizens, and we'll continue to work hard on that, so if you have anything for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Nope, I, I have a support question, I'm not pushing, are you driving the engine while everybody else pushes?
No, we'll push, we'll push, so.
There's talk of a possible, uh, fire district in Warford County, is, is that true?
Sure, talk's been going on for about thirty years. Um, and, and I'm not being sarcastic, they've been about thirty years. Um, it's something that we struggle with, we need to do something in this county. The, the unfortunate part about Martinsville and being in the Mason Dixon line, Burke Thaw, to Parrygan and, and to the county line, we are, we are dealt with, uh, a lack of manpower, and the volunteer world is great, we rely heavily on the volunteers, obviously, we come and we trade agreements and things like that, um, but those people have to feed their families and they need to go to Warford, so they can't rely on that sixteen dollar, even twenty-two dollars an hour, uh, when the run comes out, you know, that type of thing. So yes, conversation for being had, uh, it's one that I, I'm definitely for, I'm definitely for a district, if that counts, if we, we're gonna have to go to Parrygan, uh, and, and you know, Parrygan's got a great fire department, but not everybody is always there, they may not, people need to buy fire, they might not, and we find that more and more. Uh, we need to, we need to build the department, we build this fire district, and do it from the city side of things. We have new trade agreements, but at some point it becomes very costly. So I believe that all the districts, uh, towns should need to come to, um, figure out what it is, it's important. And at the end of the day, and then I'll say this a million times, I don't wanna pay any more than I have, but I'll, the day my dad fell, or the day my mom needed help, I didn't care. Do you, when your loved ones in there, do you really care? You want what's best for them.
So this is, you're talking the whole county?
I'm talking.
Morseville?
Morseville would probably be in the north district, here's why. North of Brooklyn, they have a lot of outside resources that are full-time career, playing with the A P O N. field, A-1. Um, they pull in from career departments. Down here, when we need help, we're pulling in from everybody, but it's the volunteer world. Yes, Washington Township helps us, uh, they have three on staff, they'll send two. It takes a lot of people to, to work a fire safely. That man back there has to scratch his head and go, "Okay, how am I effectively getting everything done? And how many people are in the right places to make it happen?" So when, when the bottom falls out, because we're just lucky, but when the bottom falls out, there's going to be an answer. And, and it's not just going to be me answering, it's going to be all of you, we're all answering. And that's just how it is, because I can only do some of it. So if we need to get to that point, we have to get to that districts. Remind me.
What do you mean by bottom falls out?
Somebody is killed. Fire, fire, major fire fire injury, take a change, quickly.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief Green.
Thank you very much.
It's on tonight's agenda, the council has three, uh, citizen positions that you appoint to different boards, and we need to take a vote on whether that's the person that you still want. There'll be three separate votes. Uh, the first will be on the redevelopment commission. Uh, the houses.
Close donations.
Missions have closed. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second on that. So let's take a vote, all in favor of Mr. Grant, say aye.
Aye.
A vote. The mayor board, your current appointment is Chad Selch.
Motion, Keith Selch, please.
Second.
Motion made second to approve Chad Selch.
Motion to close.
And motion.
Second.
Motion made second, keep Keith by on the mayor board.
Motion close. Second.
Motion made second, please the appointment, uh, nominations for that appointment and have Keith, and she'll appoint him on, therefore say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. So councilman Decker, second, reach out to the, and then make sure we'll get, uh, who wants sworn in at the appropriate time. Next on your agenda are the claims, the claims prior to tonight's meeting, ready additions, corrections, and questions.
Make the motion through the claims as given.
Second.
And motion made second to the claim, to bring the claims as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Any comment tonight? Any comments from the public this evening? If not, then I just wanted to say that the, it seems kind of awkward to say this, but the state and the city dinner, it's, you know, it's like you're trying to promote yourself. But it is amazing for the recovery, uh, and, and, and for the chamber. So, uh, but those tickets are available through the chamber office. Uh, also, like, and, for being here this evening and enlightening us on some of the information that Michael presented. The next regular meeting, the coming, seven o'clock. Remember, Wednesday is Valentine's Day, so we'll get you some, we're here in turn.